This is our town of Wallingford's reorganizational meeting and I will accept nominations for select board chair.
I'm nominate Kathy Luzeder.
Is there any other nomin- is there a second to nomination?
I'll nominate Mark.
Okay, Carolyn nominates Mark.
I'll second for Kathy too.
Second for Kathy is Justin, is there a second for Mark?
And I'll second for Mark.
Okay. Any other nominations? So we'll close the nominations. All those in favor of Kathy, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, and all's in favor of Mark? So that's one, four one. Kathy, you have it. So you are now chair, you can run the meeting, you can go on to do your vice chair.
Okay, so let's see, on our agenda, we need to nominate and elect a vice chair to run meetings in the chair's absence. So the floor is open for nominations. I nominate Rod Barker for vice chair.
I'll nominate Mark.
Do we have seconds?
I'll second Mark, I think.
Okay, so, all those in favor of Mark as vice chair? Mark, you get the.
Don't be here, don't not be here.
Okay, now our next piece business is designate an official newspaper for publication of legal notices. Typically, it's the Rutland Herald.
I'll put a nomination for keeping with the Rutland Herald for any notifications.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We now need to set day, day of week, time, place of all regular meetings for the ensuing year, and this will be the official public notice for all of our regular meetings. So we've been doing it Mondays at 6:30, at the first and third Mondays of the month.
I'll make a motion, we keep it as it is.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. Okay, do we want to adopt rules of procedure and or consensus decision making? Last year, the select board voted to do both, and we have the rules of procedure written by Vermont leagues of city and towns. They recommend the rules of procedure rather than Robert's Rules of Order because they fit the business of small municipalities better than Robert's Rules does. So I think we'll need a motion for this.
I'll make a motion to continue to adopt the rules of procedure and or consensus decision making.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of using the rules of procedure?
Aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Any opposed? Perfect, there we go. We're moving on down to additions and deletions, if there any.
I think I'd like to add, it's been in the appointment section would be, we have a sidewalk committee, and Bruce Duchesne is on that committee now, and whether you would like him to continue when you get to appointments.
Okay, and that's in the appointment, so that would be farther down.
Yeah, we can just add the sidewalk committee to the list of appointments.
Okay, okay, let's do that. Okay, okay, on to minutes, and then we'll do pay orders. So we have, let's start with the meeting minutes from March 4th. Do I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept and discuss the meeting minutes for March 4th.
Okay.
For the regular meeting, yes.
For the regular meeting, yes. Yes, I was gonna say for the other Monday. There, yeah, so this would be for the meeting minutes, the regular meeting minutes, yes. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any mistakes? I think Rod will be upstanding on this since he wasn't part of the meeting.
Approve the informational meeting minutes?
We're not there yet.
Oh.
We're on the regular meeting, so all, does anyone see anything?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Our regular meeting minutes from March 4th are accepted. Moving on to the annual informational meeting minutes for March 4th.
Will we approve?
We'll need someone to make a motion.
I don't approve.
I'm not sure you can.
He's not on the board.
Because you were not at, you were not on the select board at this time, so we need to.
I went to the meeting, oh.
Right, but I think we need a select board number to.
Good.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the annual information minutes from March 4th, 2024.
Okay, and is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion, corrections? Okay, hearing none. Those in favor of accepting the meeting minutes for the annual informational meeting?
Aye.
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 Okay. Pay orders, is there any adjustments?
Nope.
No.
No.
So the pay orders as of April 2nd, 2024 are for $51,769.80. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to review the pay orders for, it'll be today or then March, sorry?
4/2.
4/2, yes, so for April 2nd, 2024.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay, does anyone see anything that they want to discuss further?
What's the Five Viper Annual Security?
Security, for the computers. I think she just did it today.
Wasn't there something that was gonna get added to the pay orders, I saw?
What's that?
There was something that was gonna get added to the pay orders, I see an email.
I don't have any questions, just this one.
Fifty-one thousand.
Any other discussion?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Okay, moving on.
No road tonight.
No road commissioner, so we're just gonna table these discussions, or we're gonna talk about?
We just need to do the annual financial plan.
Okay.
That's just a, we just take, we have to wait until the budget's approved, we take the numbers from the budget, put them into a formula that you have in your pocket, and it's just to show VTRANS that we're spending money on the roads, and we have to do this plan in order to qualify for paving grants.
Does this need a motion, or can we do this by consensus?
You can do it by consensus if you want.
So, everybody slots on this?
Good to go.
Good to go?
Yep.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we need to discuss that while we're in the roads, the sidewalk down here, and that person fell on? Do you wanna bring it, how do you wanna?
We can bring it up at the next meeting, but I spoke with her today, and she just wanted to point out that.
Right, okay.
I actually walked it this afternoon.
Oh, you did? And?
I'm gonna double check with her, she said right in front of the thrift store.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's really a nice section of road, so I'm wondering if it's on the west side.
But I told you, I was wondering if it was like a side rather than the main road to sell.
She said right in front of the thrift store, so I'm gonna double check with her because that's actually a really level area. So I don't know if it's maybe crossed the road in front of the thrift store, but on the other side of the road.
Yeah, the second email made it sound like a different location, more offside.
So I'm gonna double check, yeah, she did say in front of Dr. Bosch's office, which is a little rough, but that's not where she fell.
That's right.
Yeah, those, the descriptions were kinda different.
Yeah.
The only thing I could think of is in front of that red house that's across, that's like two down from Dr. Bosch's.
The 1818?
Yeah, because that's, that's the transitions from the concrete to the marble.
The slate, in the slate, yeah, I thought that, that was rough.
Yes.
I, yeah, yeah, but she doesn't want reimbursement for anything, she wasn't calling about that, just to point it out, that's all.
Okay.
Okay.
We're good.
So the only other thing in this would be the signs.
Right, the Burt Just Road, right?
Well, that and also the speed signs that we're having minor issues with, just little ones.
The one on seven going, or coming in to town, coming from the north is working fine.
Don't enjoy it.
Why?
So, we finally got an email back from the manufacturer that, last week?
Yep.
That said, they're sending us three new signs at the end of this week.
What?
Those signs are not the correct signs. So Sandy sent him back an email. I mean, that's after two or three emails, Sandy called him, left a message, I called him and left a message, nobody was, we never got to this one email. So we got three new signs coming, we don't know if the solar panels coming with them or spare batteries, and they wanna send the three back. So, we're like, so what's coming with them, what do you want, you want solar panels? And again, it's gone silent. So, I guess the question is, do we want to buy that third sign and always send the two back?
Because that one's working, the other two are not?
We're gonna move that, but yes.
I don't know.
I mean, I mean, we have places we can put it.
But that's the, but that's the.
We had to modify that sign to make it work.
Oh, okay.
We don't, we don't know if the state's been down to inspect it, see if it's legally out either.
Right. So we literally had to take the face off it, put a piece of tin across, black metal across the wording, the verbiage on the bottom of the sign, tape it on, turn it around, slide the face back on.
Yep.
So that it wouldn't show?
So it wouldn't show through.
Okay.
I know, so after doing all that.
So we have to, so we're gonna have to do that again, or I guess we, do we have to make a decision before they come, or?
Yeah, because they wanna collect the signs.
They want the signs that we don't want back.
Like immediately, like they don't?
They're gonna take them that day.
Okay.
Okay.
So we have two in the box.
Okay.
And the one that we put up, which can come down somehow tomorrow if we, or we can keep it and use it, you know, my thought was maybe keep it and use it out on either Creek Road or Church Street, some of those places that were having problems also, that are in the town.
And those are town roads.
The town roads, it doesn't matter what they say.
Well, we'd have to buy a, so if they deliver three new signs, and we don't return three signs, we'll have to buy another one.
Okay.
I don't know what the price would be.
Three rand or something, what we paid.
Well, we paid 10,000 for three, but that was a package deal, so I don't know what one would be.
Right.
Okay, can we find out how much one would be?
Well, they're.
Well, this guy doesn't answer emails.
Oh, great, okay.
The way he's going, it could be a year before we get a bill, so.
Do we wanna do more business with that?
No, no, not after this.
So maybe we just do an even swap, or?
Well, we, right, so we gotta have the program.
Can we keep the one we have set up?
No.
No, they wanna buy.
Okay, then I think maybe just an even swap, that's my opinion.
Right, okay, so we'll have them, have to help them take that down tomorrow?
And then, and then also the idea of like if we have one different one than all the other ones, and that's, if there's any issues like with parts or anything, or somebody does something that, because they think it works on that.
Well, we still do have one different one.
Right, the one here, yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
That's still not working.
We have that one, we have that one.
We have, right, and that's one up on 140 West, so.
Okay.
Which I think is already up there, because they moved it.
Right.
Okay, so I'll tell them, take it down and box it up.
Yeah.
All right, got it.
Okay, are we talking about the Class 2 paving grant application?
No, yeah, that's already been submitted, but we do want your input on Jessup Way.
Okay, so replace the Jessup Way, it's Pride Road. Okay.
I think somebody, somebody were on the board when, just the one with the Ira Frederick, and we made them pay for it, and so does.
If I would say from that precedent.
Unless we paid for it originally.
Right, they just wanted, they're not changing the name, they just want another sign.
Yeah, I think, yeah, they just want another sign there, I don't know what happened to it, but they want another sign there.
Probably just got battered by the stone, and like.
In the past, we bought them and they reimbursed us, or they pay us for the sign, right?
The Storks, the Storks and the Fredericks, they paid us an advance for the sign, and we installed it.
And that's correct.
Yeah, so that was, this, that one was just.
This is the recent pass, so I would say we continue with that.
Okay.
Okay.
So we would install if they pay?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, we're on to our mentions.
There you go, Kathy.
This is the chance to recognize citizens who have done good deeds for the town. Thank you to Dennis Duhame.
Yep.
Is that correct? Duhame for putting together the newest tracks bench given to the town for plastic recycling efforts, and to Anthony and Kim Bahui for donating to the monthly newsletter.
That's right.
Good, and now we're at public comments. Basically, for something on each other, okay.
Nope.
And now we're up to the Green Mountain National Forest, and Martina Barnes.
Great, thank you, Kathy. All right, we have a map to make it a little easier to navigate and present the information, so.
Yeah, how would it be best for us to be situated in the room for everybody?
Stand in front of you, or?
Oh.
I mean, that's, that's okay.
Just standing up front will be just fine, I think we can all see.
We can all see, and we'll leave the map with you, and we can email it to you, too.
Great.
So we can, you know, hone in on areas, but, well, anything, we will try to be efficient. Sandy, right, are you Sandy?
Yes, yes.
Sandy, I'm Martina Barnes, I'm the district ranger, so, and I have two of my colleagues here, Jesse Pupnall and Stacy Stratton, and we are here from the Manchester Ranger District, we're to ban our, well, it's the first time I think I've been here in person, last time I spoke to you might have been in the COVID era when I just kinda introduced myself, but we've been doing some project work in the town of Wallingford, and just thought it would be a good time to come and talk about some of the work we're doing in recreation, timber, and wildlife projects. So, we, since we are limited with time, we probably can't get too in-depth on any of the work, but just at least wanted to highlight some of the work, and I'll leave the presentation on the timber activities to Jesse when it's her, when, pass it on to her. But for some of the work that's happening, and again, I know it's really hard to see from your vantage point, but we have a large 468 acre land acquisition that is going to be part of what, it's called White Rocks Gateway, and it will be just due west of where the existing White Rocks National Recreation Area is, it's shown in blue hatches here on the map, and that was funding through the Land and Water Conservation Fund, which is a federal funding source from offshore oil drilling receipts, and currently that property is owned by the Trust for Public Land, they often purchase lands that, to sort of hold them until we can acquire them, because it can take several years to acquire the lands. So, but that one, that property will be, hopefully, fingers crossed, it closes at the end of this calendar year, so that'll be a really nice addition to the White Rocks, you know, National Recreation Area.
It's just west of.
Yeah, it's right here, just west of, you can kinda see here of the.
Yes.
Yeah, Icebed, yeah, here, and then, we, normally, the, these acquisitions take on the management area of the existing parcel of land there, and we will be looking at some potentially creating some parking areas in that to allow, because I think there will be a demand for recreation use in that area once we acquire it, but we, currently, it's, like I said, Trust for Public Land, so I wanted to mention that, that's the one positive, you know, project that's happening. We also have a variety of what we call, well, sorry, I'm looking here, wildlife openings and apple tree release areas, so those are basically where we prune the trees around apple trees to try to create sunlight, to allow the apple trees to grow and flourish, and allow wildlife to, you know, enjoy those areas, so those are several areas, and you can take a closer look when you have the map in front of you. We also had some, due to the storms last summer, we had some impacts to trails, as you very well know, and specifically the, well, the Homer Stone Snowmobile Trail was damaged in a July storm, and so we're having to do some emergency trail bridge repair there over Homer Stone Brook, so you may be aware of that, and then there's also a replacement of a major trail bridge, yeah, that's, sorry, that, yeah, that's, that's gonna be replaced, the trail bridge over the, well, there's actually two, looks like there's the snowmobile trail impacted, and also a trail bridge on the Appalachian Trail, Long Trail, so.
Is that also Homer Stone?
Yes, yes, sorry, I was confused there, because it's both the same name. And then we're also planning a tent pad work at Little Pond, Little Rock Pond Shelter site, so that should be done next summer in 2025, so the tent pad site is planned there, and, yeah, there's, those are some of the highlights, yeah, that, because I wanna leave some time for Jesse to talk about the timber sale that's part of the early successional habitat creation project, but, yeah, so you can take a look, and like I said, I'll email you the map, and I'm happy to answer any questions, maybe if not, time doesn't permit tonight, you can just email me, Sandy knows how to reach me.
Yeah, we'll leave this map with you, too.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah.
Is any of that map online for other people to take a look at?
We, I mean, we can, we can send it to you.
Yeah.
Well, we can send electronically also to the town, you know, they can put it online, too.
Yep.
It's a pretty big file, we can send it to you also.
Yeah, it's 16.6 megabytes, because I just tried to download it myself, so, but yeah, we created these maps for, just specifically for this meeting, but it's not like publicly available, so to speak, on a website, but we can email it.
And you guys can make it available as you see fit.
Yes.
So, timber sales?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, so I guess the biggest thing to point out is, there's a lot of proposed, which is the yellow bits that are kind of lingering about, there's a little stretch here as well, these are all proposed timber sale areas for the early successional Haptap treatments that we were talking about. We have a little bit of areas here that you see that's the black hashing, that was the Bully Brook sale, and all of the yellow around it was what was proposed, so not every acre's getting cut, I just wanna mention that, you know, there's a lot of space in between, and we're planning on doing that with the other areas. They're all kinda called out with the boxes, so when you guys get a chance to look at this a little bit more in depth, you'll see the extents, and then, a lot of these areas don't have names yet because they're so far out, we don't really know when they're gonna be implemented, so we don't really have a date that we can share, but as things get closer, you know, yeah, and then you'll see this like green dappling, it looks like a bunch of green dots, we treated with injection some ash trees to try to act as like a legacy area to keep away the old ash borer, so these trees were treated, what, last fall? Yeah, last fall, and there's, we have areas all over the forest to try to preserve some of the genetics that are in the area.
Have that, has that been successful?
We just treated them, so it will take some time to, like, because.
To see?
Say it again?
To see what's gonna happen.
Yeah, to see what's gonna happen, so the way that the dosage work is it's by the diameter of the tree, so as long as the, we contracted out the work, so as long as they were able to have the right mixture for the diameter of the tree, there's, they have seen good results with the, it's a pesticide, I think technically, gets taken up into the leaves and all parts of the trees, and when they munch on the tree, kills them, that sort of thing, so they might still get attacked, but not as bad, so that's what the green bits are on there, yeah.
That works.
Yeah, yeah, we do, too, yeah, ash will be sad to leave this landscape if that ends up being its future, yeah.
Does that have to be done every year?
I don't think so, I think it, I think it's persistent for a little while, I don't know what the timeframe is on that, but we don't have, I don't think, a current contract in for.
No, it's gonna be several years, I was on the Allegheny National Forest before coming here, and down there, there's not an ash tree alive anywhere, you know, we just got into that already, but what they had treated beforehand stuck around, you know, they still got infested, you know, infected, but they didn't, they didn't die.
Oh, I guess the question is, we don't have another contract?
No, that's what I mean, also, there's still ongoing research as to how often you need to do that, because I'm sure that we don't wanna over-treat either, you know, because it is a pesticide.
That's not good either.
You know, so it's, you know, because it's a controlled item, you know, they have to write down like temperature and wind speed and, you know, everything else there, but yeah, but it will be ongoing across the forest, and it's on the whole forest.
Yeah, and you guys happen to have some spots that where we, we treated some of the trees, yeah, yeah, and then, so, like I said, with any of this, oh, I guess the one last thing I will mention, is so, we're not sure yet, it's a possibility, because originally, this Bully Brook area, this chunk here and this chunk here that these call-out boxes are pointing to, we were, it was supposed to be a two-entry sale, so we were supposed to go in once, and then 10 years later, go in again, to pick up, just, because what happens is, we, our goal is like where these really tiny ones are, is to get an uneven age stand, so we're trying to get different cohorts of ages growing, so that 10-year gap will help get a, you know, we're not going to the exact same areas, but it would be in the general vicinity, but we're not sure if we're doing that now, but we'll keep you abreast, because, well, you were saying that, like, is it gonna be worth it financially? Feasible, yeah, economically feasible.
Like, you know, near their home, because, you know, as they'll tell you, we went in there and we really, you know, hit it hard, I guess we'll call it, you know, because there was so much, there were some unhealthy areas and plantations, you know, that we were trying to remove to get native, native species back, you know, hardwoods, so that, that section of road, you know, it's Chapeau and Blackwood and those areas, you know, it's, it's just probably not economically feasible to go in there, because what we didn't harvest, again, you know, there was mitigations for, for streams and brooks and wetlands and, you know, all kinds of other things, and so it's just, if you're going back in just for an acre or two, is it really?
Right, right.
But Wallingford Pond Road, though, on the other hand, you know, still has areas out there we haven't been into yet.
Right, right.
Who's doing your logging?
We put out the bid.
Okay, and do they take care of the roads after, because there's some damage to some of those roads?
So, the, so that's kind of one of the things, you know, we get into, and, and I'm sorry, Jesse, I jumped in there.
No, it's okay.
Is that, just like most people, when, you know, if, the Forest Service doesn't have any jurisdiction on public roads, we have jurisdiction on ours, and so what, what needed to be done is, like I said, I think we worked with some of the road crews when the damage was happening, to, you know, coordinate with the logger, like, no, you need to, you need to talk to the town to see what needs to be done out there, you know, either reopen the culverts or something, you know, and so that would be the town's responsibility, you know, to coordinate with the logger and say, listen, it's not fair wear and tear, or mud season, or whatever you do, it's just that, once they hit a public road, you know, and that's what, you know, that's one of the things, that's like, we just, we just don't have any jurisdiction, it's not our fault, it's not, we don't wanna do it, it's just by law, we just don't have any jurisdiction on public roads. Once they hit a road, you know, a public road, that's, that's it.
Right.
For us, you know, to be able to tell them how to do things. it for us you know to be able to tell them how to do things we try to limit it by restricting what time of year but we had an opportunity when it was really dry that summer and they worked into the fall and then you know the road had been redone and of course it probably was you know heavy loads and rain and then hadn't really been packed down a whole lot like most roads would be over time but.
Yeah.
I don't think we had a lot of problems last time.
There wasn't pretty big running.
Yeah, I mean it's it's a lot of money to put those crowns on the roads and having those huge trucks on them right after so it's expensive.
And so that would again you know we're not trying to just you know not any responsibility it's just that by law and by our policy we don't have that jurisdiction to do that and so that's why you know one of the reasons why we're here is to try to coordinate some of that in the future and.
Like because we could give the example over in Peru with Sunnyside up in the Bromley Forest area right we're working with their DPW to essentially get all parties at the table to explain how the conversation kind of has to go because the logger should be coordinating with you as much as you're coordinating with them about the road.
So you can help facilitate a conversation?
Potentially.
Exactly, we can and and the reason why is just that we just wouldn't have the jurisdiction but we learned some lessons with with Bully Brook and like I said we had some great neighbors that worked with us and we've learned some lessons and the tourney from here today and other sales to get ahead of it a little bit more and have those conversations ahead of time.
Sounds good.
Yeah, because like if a conversation needed to be had and say you needed a middle party you know we can maybe play that part but but like I I wouldn't say we're going to schedule and do all the logistics and everything like that.
Okay.
We did talk with the logger on our road and because of all that work had been done and so he just decided to write up and down a flatten it to solve the problem.
Okay.
So you know.
Yes, not sure if the problem was solved but.
Okay.
Well, no, this might seize when it's over with.
I don't know it was just it was heartbreaking it was because Charlie and Steve and Lori they spent so much time up there and I think not even a week later.
Yeah, it was not even a week later.
Heavy trucks came in just I didn't have to take my teeth out for a few days.
So is there any other general questions about?
Oh, about what?
Oh, give this.
Yeah. So the acquisition four hundred we still have the Woodford formula where the town gets.
The payment of what taxes?
Oh, the payment of lieu of taxes yeah that'll be at I mean.
No, no, it was a part of the purchase price we used to get twenty-two percent.
I don't yeah I would have to look into that I don't know.
We got a lot of money you know five hundred acres down in Harpswell Road and we got we got part of it was after Woodford which has got ninety percent National Forest so they have no tax base and you take the take the.
Your question is.
My question is is there anything besides payment lieu of taxes for for losing that off the grand list that four hundred acres nothing?
We tried that was similar to what we did with Fernfield Farms.
Huh?
This is Fernfield Farms.
Right, but in in the original agreement we have Fernfield Farms giving us a percentage of the purchase price we tried that with this one it didn't work.
Okay, so we're just we're just out.
We did try it I could bring up the old email minutes but that was discussed when we purchased this and it didn't it was it was a no go.
So I guess it didn't work this time. I guess it didn't work this time.
Okay, very good.
Okay, any other questions no yes?
Are you planning any new trails in the new states?
Oh, and oh and that acquisition yeah I think that'll.
Oh, is there?
There are some existing trails there right now so I think the right away no but yeah we would I mean we usually really rely heavily on local trail organizations to help advocate for if they want new trails to contact us because we wouldn't like proactively just create new trails because of our maintenance.
For sure, yeah.
Yeah.
No, I'm going to skip it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure. So yeah, so if you have if you you know have it if there's a local organization who wants to promote like for example there's the the Belmont is a mountain bike trail project that's being designed and built through.
Yeah, that's.
Create a mountain bike system throughout all of Vermont I don't believe there's a section in Wallingford proper but you know they are kind of promoting that project and helping create the route and proposing it so we have to then go through all of our reviews to prove it but and then we rely on local groups to help maintain it because you know the rains will continue and.
Have you looked have you looked at allowing ATVs on the National Forest?
That is.
I'd rather not have to drive all the way to New Hampshire to go riding but it would be great when we have this in our backyard.
I know, I know we.
As I was just to catalog.
It is a it's a very I guess contentious issue among the different user groups on the forest I hear people who want ATV use and then people who don't want ATV use so.
Well, when you have that much land sitting out there I don't think one's going to interfere with the other so.
Right, right, it's um yeah so until we do yeah until we officially officially until we update our forest plan we're not planning to add your new ATV trails of that new legal ATV trails but we know that a lot of these apps it's just we can't vote I think we would be open to it if the public you know wanted us to update the plan.
Do you mind? I don't want you to stop the conversation.
Thank you.
Don't mind.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much for your presentation, thank you.
Take care.
see all just to let you know I am the now the chairperson of the staff board Martes here is our vice chair and it's great to see you here this evening so we wanted to discuss roles budgets plans for next year so you have some material we have some things here for you to have I have that written here that for the recreation committee committee your budget is thirty-five thousand seven hundred seventy-five dollars and we have the rec committee's mission statement and then Wallingford Day the budget is one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. So now is there anything else we need to discuss with our committee chairs are there any questions I guess is what I'm going to start or anything that.
We were just going to give a list of like things that we're aware of coming up if that's okay.
Okay, yes.
Do you want to go first Maria since Wallingford Day is its own.
Okay, thanks. Yes, sure we'll go first I'll just update you I do have a few questions but I'll put them at the end because maybe I'll answer them as I talk never know so we're good sorry we've we've gone over our but do you need to know specific numbers or can we just say we're we're doing fine and we we see that like Wallingford Day we should we're not worried about Wallingford Day this year the library is going to help with some parts of it with some of the music and some activities so that's good we've got two new people that have joined us and we haven't organized ourselves yet but we're hoping we can add them to the committee and that's one of my questions is if once we add people and we organize do we have to come here and officially be approved or can we just send you a letter? I mean we're I'm happy to come.
So when when you recruit people to your committee?
To join our committee, yes.
I think there's a number of people that you can.
Well, I don't think so the Wallingford Day committee is has been really set up as a committee because it's it's a subcommittee.
The Volta Rec.
Right, I would think, right?
I would think that would be.
Yeah, you organize it as a five member committee if they want if they want to know two members and you have to ask you could just expand it to seven and appoint whoever they want.
So we could do it that way are you okay with that?
Well, if we if we want to expand it to seven we're saying because I think that we would have to have a specific motion because we change what the establishment.
We would need a motion to expand it to seven.
So I'll make the motion right now to expand the Wallingford Day committee to seven.
Do it a second.
A second.
Great.
There.
Any questions about expanding the committee hearing none those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, so you'll only see me again if we actually can't can't fill those places but it actually really helps to have people because we've got a great team right now so people are very specifically have certain roles and nobody is carrying the whole thing and it's and it's it's great so and that's the people coming on are going to help.
The one thing I would would just be careful with is the quorum so you'll you'll need nearly four now make sure you at the meetings.
That's true.
Exactly, yeah we we've made sure that we we pretty much hit four at least four for every meeting we have. So there's also that where we've talked fireworks our music is on is mostly confirmed where it's not it's not a hundred percent so we're not going publicly yet it's April Fool's Day I was going to tell you something wild about.
I just don't have it in me. Just know I intended.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's good enough.
Okay, there we go. We had the bike parade is happening we've one of our new people is actually on for being in our activities my person so that's great communications are on track still a little early to put it out to the world but we've got plans for that we're still trying to get that banner over the road but I just wanted to check in with Margaret there's a person like we're happy to like is there anyone that you know that you go to or?
Kate McCollum is the contact person she's the one you reached out to last year.
Okay.
Same one.
She's still there.
She's still there.
All right, we're on it then and we've got we've gotten position permission from y'all from last year to explore it and we would not we just want to make sure we've got all our ducks in a row so we come back to you to say please may we do this that you have all the information that you need and you know that we followed procedure let's see that was a question that was the other question we're doing great we're excited for Wallingford Day.
You're going to do food trucks on main street again?
Yes, we've got Hangry Hog and we've got a pizza truck and I think it's the same thing where they're up here and then they shift down to the ball field for DJ music fireworks and then Michelle because it's also the block's two hundredth birthday is going to get a dessert truck and to do with that we want to be really careful not to not to impact local businesses at all because it's Wallingford Day right so it's above all for for our town and we've got businesses that are doing well here and we want to support them so we try not to do anything that was.
Guarantee the weather this year.
Doing our best but all like what is it whenever it's the twenty-first so that week before or two weeks before we'll all just blow really hard like.
There we go, that's the plan.
Everybody turn on your fans inside your houses.
But yeah it's it's good does any do you have any questions?
Lots of here it's going on can't wait.
Do we have anything? No, because I'm going to have to talk about money just don't ask. Oh, just to throw out. Thank you, go ahead. But maybe but it can't be connected to it's separate from it's got to be separate from these letters because we're not yes so that was the thing but we do want to ask to be able to put on the ballot the the possibility of not having our our budget from as part of rec be rolled over for next year because we understand if we don't use that that goes into the general fund but any donations that we get during the year when people donate to Wallingford Day they want it to be for Wallingford Day and so my understanding is that would take a ballot measure and then a one and done like once people supported that that we wouldn't have to do it again.
Unless there's some other way to do it that we don't know of.
It would have to be a separate fund, right?
Unless if there's a special separate a special fund basically for anything if people are going to donate to something like Wallingford Day then the money should be used for that otherwise they're not going to donate and next year we may have to do some funding.
We have to voter approve the voters have to prove it.
Voters have to approve it we just want it approved so we could set we could put on the ballot a reserve fund for donations that are made to Wallingford Day and then once that's done it's done.
And does that I mean and that's a good point if if donations like could that not be a or is that just too complicated like don't if people are donating for a specific community effort really all of those are intended for that effort is there any way to put that as a blanket thing or do we really have to go thing by thing?
You have to be specific.
Yeah.
Okay.
But once if it passed then it would be forever it would you have to do it every year?
Every year, no.
Yes.
I mean you just you have to just word it the right way and then we did that a few years ago on another thing and you worded it so that.
Yep.
And any leftover money and donated and we'll check with the LCT on the correct wording.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Then I'll be back to asking specifically.
Okay.
Why wouldn't I need to do that?
Is that town meeting day only or is it also at the general election in November?
I mean you could do it at either but it's not going to affect until the next budget anyway so.
Right.
This year somehow.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for your support.
Thank you.
It's really important, thanks for your part of the town.
Well, it made to the you know the State of the Union address we got it.
I know, right, yeah we recognized by the governor.
Right, very cool.
Yes, yeah.
How great it's been.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we just have a list David is the vice chair and I'm the secretary we don't have a chair right now so we're going to be reorganizing at our next meeting after you folks organize so we just put together a list to discuss some things to just get your input or just so you know they're coming up we're going to be having two cleanup days in April April sixth and April twenty-third the sixth one we were a little concerned about the weather so we might just work on like cleaning out the sheds because there's a lot of like old equipment that's like fired and probably needs to be gotten rid of in there and we're not sure about like the fridge is moldy from the flood and like you know we just need to like go through everything and probably throw a lot of stuff out so one thing we talked about asking was if we could bring things that we can't sell or recycle to the transfer station so that's one question we have for you and then on the twenty-third depending on how the conversation goes about cleaning up the south baseball field we were hoping to maybe do that work on that day and have the machinery there clean up the south field that was damaged in the flood we've been trying to figure out how to make that happen.
And when are you thinking of doing that cleanup?
The cleanup days are April sixth and the twenty is it the third or the twenty-seventh?
I think it's the twenty-sixth it's where the Saturday on Saturday.
Right here, right here on the seventh.
The twenty-seventh, yeah Julia emailed me and told me I had the date wrong in the minute so.
Is this wrong?
No.
Oh, okay, this is.
Twenty-seventh.
It's the sixth and the twenty-seventh.
And we coordinated with the Rutland County literally so they're going to be showing up as well.
Excellent.
Oh, great.
Yeah, and they're actually buying bases new bases which are like a thousand dollars so that's their contribution so we've been talking to them about like you know contributing to maintenance of the fields so that's their contribution so yeah repair the fields at some point I put April May in here but depending on how the finances work out and you know putting it out to bid and all that.
Yeah, what we need to do because basically what it needs is clay needs to be replaced and washed away in the flood so I mean that's and so I'm what I'm assuming was being the money is going to cover that somehow but until then we might have to pay for it another way I guess and then Phil Baker said he could truck it to the fields and once it's the fields we can find people and volunteers that'll come and help spread it get it in place and get it ready to go over the next.
Is that planning on being done the twenty-seventh the clay?
Whenever we get it there the sooner the better at this point weather permitting I mean as long as it's there then we can start you know if somebody's got a night off and wants to come down there and start spreading it by hand or when you have equipment down there.
There was a question on where to get it didn't Phil have a question on where that was coming from?
Was it in New York?
Probably or somewhere near. Probably, or somewhere near Castleton, I thought he said.
Right, right, right.
But we'd have to reach out to see exactly, make sure they have it, I guess. I've never bought it before.
Well, give, you got Phil's number?
Yeah.
Reach out to Phil.
Phil's not, Phil's gonna, on two different vacations, he won't be back until the 21st, April 21st.
Well, the other thing is it needs to be put out to bid, so, you know, we have some things to do before we can get that done, so
Oh, so.
We're shooting for the 27th, but we don't know.
So whenever, whenever it's feasible, whenever it works out.
Either way, we're having a workday on the 27th.
Yes.
You know, but whether the clay will be here, we can fix that.
I love the clay involved that day.
Well, let's stay optimistic, but yeah, there might really be not be clay. Um, because we need to, I mean, I don't know how long we have to put it out to bid for. I mean, we could probably turn that around quickly, but we needed to get your approval to spend the money because, like Mark said, we estimated the project's gonna cost about five thousand dollars, um, four loads of clay and, um, some other, some topsoil and
Really, it comes down to replacing the clay and then the man hours and putting it back in and getting it back up to some.
So the purchasing policy has up to $499 solicit written quotes, so we don't have to do, like, the RFP, kind of create a whole, like, we just get some, a few different folks to give us written quotes.
But it's gonna be like three thousand probably, because we need four, four loads, and they're about eight hundred dollars a load.
Right, so that, so the modern, the modern items is 1,500 to 499, we solicit minimum of two, preferably three bids.
Right, so we can do that easily.
Yes. Create an RFP and send it out and like that, so we can just get.
That makes a lot, yeah, that's great. So we can just call some places and get us.
Yeah, so there we are.
We could probably, if we have the money to spend. So, yeah, I mean, basically, I think the way the town works, the finances with FEMA reimbursement is, like, for roads, like, you front the money and then get, hope to get reimbursed by FEMA, and FEMA did send out a notice saying what they estimated it to be, which was like 10 times what we estimated it to be. And then there's a 25% match, so we were like, I don't know what they, they were estimating way more material than we actually need. I don't know what that was based on.
Well, they were out there with their wheels and everything, measuring three of them, so.
Yeah.
But I don't know. They've done that on a few things, so.
I mean, if they're gonna give us money, I guess, it depends on how much. I don't know what six loads of clay are gonna give, like, go with.
But there's a 25% match, so if we spend forty thousand dollars, then we have to come up with ten thousand.
Exactly.
Where's that fund, where's the balance?
I mean, we have to justify it all. We have to show that this is being done, so. And, and it has to be, like, I sent a message to Shannon, it has to be, put it back to the way it was. We can't approve it on their dime, so we can't do, like, ah, it's great now. It just has to be the way it was before the flood.
I just don't know what six, like, six loads to two, three loads. I don't know if it's 10 loads, I don't know.
That may be something filled.
Well, I think we should start with four and see how it goes. Um, but the, so the matching fund, another grant came through, which I, um, sent to Sandy, so I don't know if she printed it out for you, but it's called the...
Is that arts and community?
Yeah, the arts and community. So, we were planning to apply for that, because it's flood recovery and they want you to have, like, community events and art projects, so we were hoping to apply for that for the 25% match, but also incorporate some fun community events and a mural on the building at the park, which Macy Smith, I actually have a copy if anybody hasn't seen it, but she kinda drafted up like a, an idea for the mural, give this to you guys to pass around.
Yeah, that was a pretty, little easy threshold.
Yeah, and it seems like a pretty easy little threshold.
Yeah, not a lot of work to get that grant.
Not a lot of work. I wrote the grant already and sent it to Sandy if you have any comments, but, um, so we were hoping to have a movie night and have, like, popcorn.
Oh.
And that would get us a, you know, we could buy a projector that we would have for the future. Um, and then the other event was, kind of, once the field is, like, refurbished, we're gonna have, like, a community breakfast. And maybe have, like, yoga at the park and maybe some soccer, we're gonna talk about that too, but, you know, try to have, like, some community events for, like, people on their way to the dump. Like, Sandy brought that up, that, like, you know, people will be, like, coming through town on a Saturday morning, be able to catch them. So...
Just so you know, it's not a 25% match, FEMA does 75%, and then the town and the state split the other 25.
Oh, really?
So we're 12 and a half percent.
Oh. Well, that's even more.
Okay. Well, maybe we should just leave that money in the budget for the grant, just in case we need more material, like, that way we can cover it.
That's the thing is, I don't know where it's gonna go.
We don't really know.
They're saying more than that's what it is, but what number, you know?
Yeah.
And you don't know exactly how much FEMA's actually gonna pay us, so.
I always see, I always see.
I think clays, red clays are, clay's a little expensive, more than a...
Well, we'll definitely, we'll go with whatever wants to your red or gray.
Yeah.
But, I just, I don't know how far it goes, first one versus ten. But what kind of number should we be planning on? Is it, you know, five loads or five thousand, or when we come back, um, you know, when we get the quotes? I mean, that's where the bid, I guess, is the question.
I mean, uh, I don't know if Bastian, maybe Bastian has done those, the fields before.
So we paid for it. So Steve actually was the treasurer for a long drill and
Curious how many?
We bought three loads last time, and it was eight hundred dollars a load. For 700, I think maybe we added some.
I think it was somewhere.
But that was delivered, so that included the trucking.
Not bad.
Yeah.
But that was a couple of years ago, so it should be more, it might be a thousand a load now. We don't know until we call and we haven't called, because we're wanting to get approval.
But at least you know it was roughly three hun, three, three loads before.
We got three loads and we had extra that we stock filed in the parking lot.
Okay.
So, we didn't use it all the first year, but we also didn't have a flood, so we didn't have much.
Right, right.
You could need, we could, we would need more, yeah.
So maybe you price us for four loads.
Yes.
See what that.
And see, see what that is.
Yeah.
That'd be a good start.
Yeah. We could do that and apply for the grant for the match and hopefully we get it. If not, we'll have to scramble for the match and we have a little bit of money left in our budget, not much.
Well, we'll see.
Because, you know, the one toilet situation at the beach took up our whole budget. Like, literally, the whole maintenance budget for one toilet plugged. So, um, we don't have any money left in that item. Um, but, so the water at the park, that's the next one. The money is still, the money never got paid out to Lozen because, well, whatever, Julie had written out the check, but then it expired, so the check went back into one of the budget line items for the water at the park, so as you know, we dug the hole. There was no...
Twelve hundred dollars.
Twelve hundred dollars, right.
Okay.
We dug the hole. There wasn't for the hole, that was for plumbing. The hole was the road crew, and they were fantastic. They dug and dug and dug. And there was no water line. So, and the, the water district came out and they were sure, they were beeping with the little tool and they're like, it's here. Well, we're looking there and it's not there, so we don't know where the water is, but they turned it on.
I went down, after they were there, put the dowson rods to it, so that orange paint you saw on the ground.
Yeah.
To the best of my knowledge, is where the water is.
It was, like, right next to the building.
It comes in, I think, if I remember, it's the left side of the building.
Yeah.
Goes through, under the building, through the building, and it comes out on that little pergola thing on the backside, on the right-hand side, and travels, you know, kind of, rebound out to the...
Well, we were just thinking, what, what was interesting about that day, and the only reason it wasn't a total colossal waste of time, is that the water district turned on the water, and the water had great pressure, and it worked fine. So, everybody's been, you know, a lot of people have been saying all along, like, why don't you just fix it where it is? And I was like, it's broken, it's broken, it's broken, but it's not broken. They were like, this is not, this water line is not broken, so then we don't need to dig it up if we just replace the faucet where it is with a vandal-proof spigot that we can turn on and off.
So basically, all it needs to happen is what you just said, to replace.
Needs a new spigot.
A new spigot with a vandal-proof handle.
I, I think it would be worthwhile to explore what it would take to put, like, some sort of, like, some of the people could actually fill up water bottles and have, like, available to the public, not just the faucet, that we unlock for events. It would be nice to have something that public.
Like some sort of thing that would pump the wall.
Well, like, what they have at the state parks is great. They're just like these little watering stations where, like, you turn the thing and it automatically springs back.
Yeah, if that, if that went through the building, like I said, that's what, it goes into, it looks like it goes into the building, comes out, you could, in the building, put on a, like a, not a timer, but, um, something that says, if that water runs for more than five minutes, it's shutting it off. You know, that type of thing. And you might be able to get away with putting it in the building, instead of trying to get something in the ground.
And that would protect it.
That's what we tried to do, though, and, like, that would require, like, the whole road crew coming for another day and, like, digging another hole and we're still.
Well, not if you put it in the building.
What do you mean?
Well, I presume that water comes into the building, then leaves just the way it.
No, it doesn't come into the building. There's no hookup to the building, the water.
There's no water in the building, so it must go under the building.
And that would have solved a lot of problems. There's no water in the building. We were gonna put water in the building. That was the plan, was to put a shut-off valve in the building and have a spigot on the outside, and that would have solved a lot of problems, but we dug a big hole.
Well, like I said, it looked like, when I, when I found it, it looked like it came in, there's something that comes in on that
Yeah.
right-hand side of that building, and it, of course, I couldn't tell inside, but it comes out on the back right corner.
I did see your line. Yeah, it looked like, yeah, it looked like right close to the building.
Yeah.
I just don't know if we wanna, like, invest another, like, day of the road crew to figure that out, or we can just replace the spigot. I mean, it just seems like such a simple.
Maybe the future.
Solution. Yeah, we can figure out a better solution, but that would cost more, I mean, replacing the spigot.
Right now, it seems like replacing the spigot is the way to go.
Is, is there something, like, can you build, like, a box over it, just as another, kinda like, to make sure that it's not accessible during the off?
Well, I think we just turn the water off at the, at the street.
At the street, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and there's some things we've investigated, like, that are, like, water fountains, that are something that we can build that are vandal-proof.
Right.
And I don't know if there's a shut-off in them too, like, inside a lock.
Lockable, it probably gets one.
But we've, we've just found some things that we can call, I think she talked to some people at Webbs about options and we've looked online on things, but there's range from 1,500 to, I don't know, 3,000 somewhere.
Yeah, we only have 1,200.
We don't really know what the cost to be.
So that money that was used for plumbing never got used, because you never put plumbing in, correct?
Nothing ever got spent. We canceled Lozen.
And we can use that for your.
And Lozen had said all along that it wasn't broken, that we should just replace the spigot. And I was like, no, you don't understand, it's broken.
Okay.
So you still have money enough to replace this spigot, then?
Yeah, I think so. I had to double check, but yeah, she just emailed me about it the other day. Then, um, other Meadow Street maintenance, there was the list from, um, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns that Sandy and I have been going back and forth about, because the road crew did some stuff.
Right.
We're gonna work on it on the workdays. It's like a lot of little things, like fixing screws on the ski, the branch.
Low-hanging tree branches.
Yeah.
You know, the swings are too high.
We should investigate signs. The, the one thing they would want was signs, so we should see how much that would cost.
Signs for what? Signs for?
Rules for the park, like, when is open, closed, safety rules, they're there for the public to see.
We have a signed budget too, so that won't come out of your, your budget.
So that's something we need to explore as well.
Well, it might be a good idea too, because didn't somebody perhaps the idea that we have, like, too many signs down there too?
Right, a lot of signs, yeah.
And so, we almost thought about densing it on, there were just one clean, nice-looking sign.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Like the one at the beach.
Like the one at the beach.
That everybody knows rules, kinda, here it is, make it.
I was thinking if we get that grant, maybe while Macy's there painting her artwork, we could have her, like, write out a hand, like, something really neat and pretty, to match the mural.
It might need to be, in terms of, like, ADA, it might need to be actually printed.
Printed.
And then on a reflective.
You might just want to check that out, that's a good point.
Yeah, we can ask her, maybe we can ask the LCT what they think of us replacing all the signs with, like, one sign.
Or just figuring out a better, like, even, take three and make it one.
Is, is there ever a possibility to add an actual gate to the doorways, or to, like, the walkways between, I just think about my kids, like, them running out all the time.
That's great. I never even thought of it, but I'm sure it can be done.
I mean, the chain, like, entrances and, yeah.
Yeah, just, just where there, there's a gap there already, where the, it just is mu, like, because I don't think we, because it's just a sidewalk that we're blocking off. But just having a gate there would be nice. That's the nicest part, like, we were down in Georgia over the winter and it was the nicest part of the, the playground was that it was fenced in completely, so that you didn't have to, they could, they could roam, they could be.
You have to worry them running into the parking lot.
All the time, all the time. Because they really love it. They really wanna chance it.
And then the only other, um, two things is the beach workday, you know, before the beach opens, we'll have a workday down there and rake out the beach and figure out the volleyball net and all that stuff, clean out the garage. There's old, like, wood pieces in the garage from when the last retaining wall was built.
Oh.
We moved them from inside the building into the garage last time we hoed out the place, but now I'm like, why are they in the garage? Like, can we just get, maybe the road crew can use them or something, like, maybe we, you know, I sell them to somebody in the community, I can take a picture, you know, just get rid of them, because they're taking up valuable, like the dock.
It's just pieces of wood.
Yeah, they're pressure-treated four-by-fours. But they're like, they were too small to do the retaining wall, and that's why they, I think it kinda fell apart.
So it'd be nice to move them on.
Maybe we should just get rid of them. And then, um, if we have any money left over, we wanted to, we looked into this last year, was hiring a contractor to paint the drip edge, because it's, like, rotting. I don't know if you've seen it, but like, that drip edge, and we got a quote last year for 500 dollars, but we didn't have the budget, so if it gets to, like, June and we have the money left, I would like to get that done as, like, a preventative measure. And then, the only other thing, we've been talking about for a while, um, but I actually made a map to try to figure out how we could do it, was adding a soccer field down at the park, because it's one of the sports that we don't have now.
Right.
Um, so, years ago, Rodney Ward and I went down there and
What?
Oh. Rodney Ward and I went down there and measured out the outfield's for what they needed to be, so those are the circles. I only have two.
That's fine, we can check.
But then there's this little square down here, and that's a U-12 soccer field.
Yeah.
So that south field just gets used for, like, T-ball and really, really little kids, so they don't need the outfield so much. And a lot of communities, like, use land for, like, little purposes, like, I've seen soccer fields and baseball fields and whatever, so.
So that little rectangle is where you're thinking for the soccer field?
Yeah, and randomly, there's two soccer goals that don't have nets down at the field, that I think people sometimes just drop stuff off there that they don't want anymore. So Sandra put it up on Front Porch Forum and nobody's claimed them, so for, like, 40 bucks, we can get new nets and
Excellent.
And spray a soccer field and just have some drop-in soccer on Saturday morning.
Yeah, I mean, soccer's pretty popular. Manchester has several different, like, has a winter league they do, and they have pickup on Thursdays and also Sunday mornings. At Rutland, there's Thursdays and Sunday morning pickup, so, I mean, there is, and those are all really well-attended. So, I mean, there's definitely community interest for that sort of thing.
And I know that Mill River would love to see more kids playing soccer.
Yeah.
And if there's a way that Wallingford can help support that.
Yeah.
And if it's already me, I mean, it's already there.
See the market.
There, you just gotta.
It's really not even gonna, like, cost, you know, I think we approved 200 dollars to, like, buy some soccer balls and get the nets and the paint and suddenly we have a soccer, because the, literally, we were looking at buying goals and they're expensive.
Expensive.
They just showed up.
You know, more often than not, though, a lot of, like, even pickup soccer is done on smaller fields and smaller goals. People just kinda play, 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 modify their weight, their game, their gameplay to fit the goal.
Well, right now, we, we have nothing, so anything is an improvement over what we have.
Yeah. Well, and plus, like, we don't wanna have a huge field, because there's gonna be little kids playing on it, so we don't wanna have, like, a full-size field that, like, 10-year-olds can't play on, so this is kind of a compromise. Okay, well, we can do that. We'll figure it out. It'll be worth it for us. The soccer expert will figure it out.
Does anybody know the size?
I have kids to soccer, I don't actually understand the game, so.
There's, there's definitely space there in, in the various outfield's, to put a field diagonally in the larger section or, or on that south field, that's for sure. There's definitely space. If we have interest in a smaller field, we could go bigger. I mean, there's, there's space.
It's not like an actual game will be there, there doesn't need to be regulations, so.
Absolutely, but, I mean, if we do find that there's a, you know, a large number of adults who want a bigger field, we could mark that down there. It was pretty high interest on the survey we did a few years ago. That was when things came up.
Well, I know whoever does adult drop-in.
Yeah, and it's usually, like, it's at the end of the day on Saturday now in the winter too, and tons of people show up.
It's, it's very well.
It's very popular, yeah. So the others.
It's good to have a place where kids could walk to.
Exactly. Like, after school or on Saturdays. The only other thing, um, we, we've talked about some future RIC ideas, like chess night. We were gonna do, like, just a three-night chess night to see if there's, like, interest. Drop in pickleball, you know, we tried to have lessons last year and that didn't work out, but people really wanted pickleball in the survey, so be cool to, like, make that happen somehow.
Yeah.
You know, and then Heather started the walking group, which seems to be going really well, and having a summer movie, and then just drop in soccer, was the only other thing. And, yeah, so the only other thing we wanted to get approval for was applying for that grant, which Sandy or I can submit. I just wrote the questions out on, in Word.
Can that be consensus?
Yes, yes.
So what do we think?
I think it was like five, it was a little under 5,000 dollars total for the movie, the breakfast. And we were gonna use, like, local food and try to have, um, the, Sandra had a great idea of having the Mill River Band come and play, like, music in the morning when we have breakfast. Wouldn't that be cool to have some of the local, like, juniors and seniors come and play, like,
So.
We could do yoga under the big tree and have, like, live music and local, local moments.
I know the trombone player that is cleaning his trombone this evening.
Perfect. We're just gonna round up the troops and, so the total was 45, 50.
I flew in a trumpet, there we go, it's a tree out.
And Adam will be back.
Just, uh, what, for the, for that soccer field, do you think you could also maybe do, uh, a little square for Ultimate? Because it's forty, Ultimate is forty by one-twenty and then, uh, soccer seventy by one-seventeen. So you could do it within it. If you did, if you want, yeah, just different colors, just to have the same field.
Yeah, that's the idea, is you want to start marking things, so we could, frankly, we could mark a football, you know, like
Right.
One, two on that field, depending what we.
Just what color do you want the thing, right?
Yeah, exactly.
And that's what we talked about, eventually we never get a grant, like, they make these goals that are like soccer on the bottom and football on the top. And so I was thinking like, wouldn't it be cool to have those, but they're like five thousand dollars.
Yeah, these.
Yeah.
So that's like.
Of course, yeah, well, that's, yeah.
We'll start small and.
Once we start something, we can start looking for people that donate and.
Yeah.
Right.
Have a larger, yeah.
So I, did we get consensus on the grant?
Consensus.
Yes, yes, Heather?
Yes.
It's yes.
And consensus on them to pursue repairs on the field too?
Consensus, yeah, for you to.
Pursue repairs, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Happy New Year.
Is there anything else you need from us going forward? Is it all good?
Just, just again, like a green light to bring whatever metal disposables to the.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Free of charge, of course. That's just a case of letting, know wherever, whatever they take.
Yes, the answer's yes.
Okay.
It'll be the sixth and the twenty-seventh and the workdays will be when the dump's open too, so it'll be like, hey, I'm coming over. You'll basically see us drive.
And whatever's like salvageable, we could leave there for people to take, but like, there's some stuff that's probably gonna have to be thrown out, I mean, some of that stuff has been.
Well, it's gonna be.
If the fridge is broken, for example.
Well, the fridge is moldy, but we're gonna check it out. Somebody sprayed bleach in it, you, Mark?
Yeah, I kind of cleaned it.
We're gonna check it out.
No, that was before the flood, I cleaned it.
Oh.
But I don't know how, I mean, it didn't get that hot.
That's just an example of something that we could rather not have to pay to dispose of. You know what I mean?
It's probably all right if I had to guess, but we'll see, I don't know.
I don't know, nobody brick, will refrigerate.
Just open it outside.
I've seen, I've seen worse refrigerator this week, so I'm all right.
I'm hoping we're gonna grab on.
Great. Well, not the house.
If anybody wants to stay, they're gonna be.
Thank you, thank you, thank, oh, perfect, thanks.
I should, I should go.
Okay, yeah, gotcha.
You guys good though?
Yeah.
Thanks.
I was just gonna say. My thanks for coming.
Thank you, Miss.
Yeah, I'm just here to support.
So we are moving on and I think our next item is the annual dog registration due date. So due to the snowstorm, this town hall rabies clinic was rescheduled to April sixth. Um, so the, the permission to extend the date to assess penalty from April first to April eighth. Um, it costs ten dollars for a neutered spade and fourteen for unneutered, not spade before April first, and fifteen for neutered spade and twenty-one for unneutered spade after April first. Do you want to waive the fees until April eighth?
I'll make a motion to waive the fees until after the eight, or till, yeah, till the eight.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those.
A discussion, yeah. How can we, uh, if it's a state law, how can we change it?
You're not changing the registration date, you're just wa, you're not changing the registration date, you're just wa.
Waiving the fees.
Just waiving the fees as well, not, not changing the date.
Gotcha.
Just waiving the fees.
Good.
That's it.
What about, what about the wolf hybrid though? That, that's, uh, this is a relative state statue and it's all about, uh, the wolf hybrid.
Well, these are the minimums, we charge more.
Right.
Julie charges more than that anyways.
Oh, just, just waiving the, just waiving the fee, okay.
Just waiving the fees.
Just waiving the fee.
Yeah.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent.
Okay, so we're moving on to annual appointments and reappointments. Um, so up for reappointment, um, on the Conservation Commission is Denise Eddy, Ralph Mims, and Debbie Scranton for three-year terms. Um, Constable Robert Cook for one year. Beth Blaisdell on the DRB for three. The dog warden, Joseph Elwell for one year. E nine-one-one coordinators Dale and Eric Davenport one year. Emergency Management Director Jim Bagnell for one year. John Armstrong, Catherine McLaughlin, and Ken Welch for three years on the Energy Committee. Michael McMahon, Fire Protection Budget Committee, one year. Erica Burner, Kevin Mullin on the Planning Commission, three years. Bruce Dobbins as Rutland County Solid Waste Rep and Rutland Regional Transportation Council Rep, one year each. David Cornwell, Shannon Pitlock, Brian Ferguson, Mark Noble for Recreation for one year. Eric Burner as Rutland Regional Planning Commissioner Rep for one year, Tree Warden, Rob Barker for one year, and Bruce Duchesne on sidewalks. Would that be?
Yeah.
One year?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, it might not even last year, just, there's no term on that one, just whenever that committee dissolves.
No term on that one. So what's our feeling on all of those?
Could I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
Um, I was just wondering why Recreation only has one-year terms when all of the other committees have three-year terms?
I don't have much.
It's one of those, that's how it's always been. I mean, maybe that's something.
Something we could revisit.
Change the terms if you wanted.
Would you like us to revisit that? And are the, are there all the other ones for three? Because I was reading a lot of three.
The Planning Commission and the DRB and the Conservation Commission are all three.
Right.
It's just have to make things consistent, the two committees.
So are we good with? And do we need a motion for this?
Yeah.
How we need a motion for this, right?
Because it would change whatever.
I could say so, I don't know if you word it. Accept all of the annual appointees and reappointees with the addition of the Rec Committee is now three years instead of one year.
Yeah.
Do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion on that? Hearing no discussion, I'm gonna put it up for those who approve of the motion.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Sure.
Your stuff, three years.
Are two years a member? I'm, I'm, I'm still missing your name, I'm crazy.
Sandra Hockberg, I just joined like three months ago.
Right, so she wasn't, she wasn't included in the reappointments because she just.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Is, is.
I knew, I knew you were newer and I couldn't remember.
No, but thank you for asking.
Just making sure. Well, it may make sense to stagger them so they're not all up at the same time.
Write some twos.
You can figure out who to do what, but, you know what I mean, have like one start at two years, or it doesn't matter, probably doesn't matter. Whatever.
Yeah, it's like, because it's not an election, so it's really just whenever it comes up and, yeah.
You want Tammy Heffernan as moderator?
So do we want Tammy Heffernan as mo, as moderator?
Oh, before, before that, Kathy, uh, Rob, you have to officially abstain from voting for yourself for.
Oh, good.
From Tree Warden, I would imagine, right?
That's right.
It's okay.
So Rob is.
Make sure that's what Rob knows.
Rob is abstaining from voting for himself is true. Thank you, thank you for that. So now, do we want to appoint Tammy Heffernan, who's willing to serve as moderator? Um, because no one ran for the post. We can do this by consensus?
Yeah.
Good job.
Okay, yes, that's a yes. Do we want to, um, appoint Phil Baker as Road Commissioner for another year?
Yep.
Yes, yep.
That's a yes.
Yes.
You have an opinion on this one?
You never know. Um, do we want to appoint Chelsea LaRocque, who's willing to serve as auditor since no one ran for the post?
Uh, yes.
Yes, yeah, she's willing to do it, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, she is.
Okay, now the next one. So now, who on the select list wants to serve on the Leadership Committee? I've done it for the last few years. Would you like to do that?
No.
I would be fine giving that to, yes. I think there's a point where you're gonna go, yes, that's good.
You got enough.
I got enough, yeah.
Excellent.
So.
Got it.
Okay, great. So now.
And Lori's here.
Yeah, Lori's here. So here we are, summer hybrids on public beach and summer camp are way raised. Okay?
I'm not sure, what am I supposed to do?
Would you give him a thing that I sent you?
Yeah, with the, yes, yep.
Okay, so what do I need to do? Okay, so let's see, let's get stuff out for.
I emailed it to all of you, but her proposed budget to go for five weeks.
So it's a budget for five weeks, and how many weeks did we do it last year? Was it four?
Four.
Four weeks, yeah.
So this is for five. Do we have a copy of, of that?
Okay, let me print it out for you.
I'm sorry.
Oh, that's all right, no, that's all right.
Okay, so I think everybody knows that this year is the first year I'm taking it over by myself. So I'm new to all this stuff and I'm just trying to figure it out. And I was asked by lots of parents if we could do more camp. So I didn't quite understand that the budget is done way before I even, you know, thought of that. Um, so I, just to myself, said I could get away with doing five weeks myself, you know, with, um, so if that fits in, okay. I don't know what you guys think, if anybody's. What accommodations do you have to do to make camp work for five weeks with the budget that you have? Because it's gonna be a week more camp. I'm, I have looked and looked and I think I'm gonna be able to stay where I'm supposed to be with the four weeks. Okay. Being that there's only one director now, not two of us. That's weird. That's gonna make a difference. So you'll be the director of Lisa Willoughby? I'm doing everything. Okay. And, and I'm gonna have, if it all works out right, I'm gonna have two fantastic staff with me. So I'll be able to do some paperwork sitting at the lake, which is gonna be big because, you know, it was almost impossible before to do that. Right. So that's gonna help the budget, you know, keeping us, because I won't do it all at home. Now, there's, um, there are rates here for Lisa, so are those not applicable at this time? We can take those out? Well, actually, for Lisa, those are up in the air in case I need some help passing, getting stuff through, like, you know, working, and I think I'm good because she gave me all the papers, but, you know, getting the field trips set up and the buses and where they can pick up and where they can drop off and all of that. And so the, and it's very small amounts of money, so this would be, um, in case, like, it's a backup. And if I'm ever sick, she offered that coverage.
That was gonna be my question.
Yeah.
Great, and so this is within the budget?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and we're actually a little under the budget. Okay.
Yeah, and Ari, Ari Lefever might help out a little bit. He's waiting to hear, uh, about a summer internship, but he might be available too.
Is he doing anything with us this summer? Has he applied for it yet?
No. No, because he's not sure.
So this would just be for camp?
He would be interested in doing something with the camp, he said.
Oh.
And so there would be a little room for him too. And Lori said Olive wants to get her lifeguard certification.
Did she have a program that she's looking to? She is. Certification? Yeah, she's all saying that. Actually, she just messaged me tonight. She talked with Ari and he's helping her getting it set up through White's Pool.
Oh, good.
Excellent.
Oh, excellent, good.
So it looks like we might have, would Olive just do it with the camp? Was she interested in doing it with the beach? Well, I thought Beach wasn't hiring lifeguards.
Yeah, because, yeah, we had talked about that. No, we had talked about just the idea that having a lifeguard was really only so for the camp.
Gotcha, okay. Yeah, so she'll have us covered. Okay, so just for camp. And really, we're counting on it because twenty-five kids at the camp would, or the lake would know swimming would not be very much fun. For anyone. Okay. Any other? Um, do I need to say anything? Max's application?
Yep, you've got a copy of that.
I have a copy. You know, this would be something that we would.
Just if, so Ari, because she, he's not on this list.
No, because he's not sure if he's available.
What would his, where would his K-ball be?
Exactly.
Yeah.
Because if he's not in lifeguard anymore, he'd be a camper.
Right, so there, um, Lori's total came up to eighty-nine, twenty-eight.
Mm-hmm.
So there's a little, where, where, maybe he wouldn't be, it would just be sort of a fill-in or maybe.
Right.
Or if Olive leaves a day off.
Yeah, or if there's just a ton of kids or whatever and they wanted.
How much more do we have on this budget? It, it ends up to be six or seven hundred.
And Lori's also thinking of not doing all the field trips, so there would be savings in the.
And now it's saving money there.
Busing that she could use if Ari, if they wanted to hire Ari more, or wherever.
Yeah, so busing last year just to go to Rutland was seven hundred dollars. Busing is not easy either, it's hard to find people to drive. Yeah, so, but, we still, we gotta find out other options. Yes, okay.
I wonder if we can hire people to come to the park and have them like, now that we have, if we have like soccer and Ultimate, like have some like Tuesday mornings is soccer time or whatever, if we could find a local volunteer like Jayden to, to, you know.
Junior counselors.
If I know somebody to.
Well, I just, because it's my first year taking it all on, I wanted to skip the CITs. Sounds reasonable. You know, I'd like to go back to that, that was good, but.
Right, right. But there is programs that would probably could come to you.
Yeah, programs, yeah.
There probably was.
And that's what we're hoping, I'm gonna be looking at the Mint to see if they can come to us.
Right, right.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, great. Are there any questions for Lori?
Yeah, I would just, where would Ari fall for? Do you know?
Yeah, I would.
Because he's no longer.
Pay, you mean, or sound check?
Yes.
I would say smack dab in the middle of Olive and Max.
Okay, just because he already has lifeguards.
Yeah, yeah, but, um, I don't know if she said, but he's looking at an internship right now.
Right. But if something happens and he's paid. If we're going to talk to you about the money and approval, then to kind of get in.
Yeah.
So there's not gonna be a lifeguard at all outside of camp?
It doesn't sound like there is.
All right, correct.
No lifeguard outside of camp.
I know, that, just because that's, I remember we talked about it, just because there was the really the tough time we had finding somebody last year.
Last year, we had more applicants than we could hire. I mean, last year, we actually had applicants, because Olive was willing to get her. We like plastered the world with QR codes.
We did have issues. Budging. But budgeting-wise, did we have anything for that? Because I think that was part of, wasn't necessarily all.
Yeah.
I mean, do we have, because I think we have that still in there.
Part of the concern was the lifeguards that were down there last year
Well...
had attentiveness issues.
There was the issue with the one.
Ari did. Ari was very good.
Ari was very good.
So we figured it might be easier to...
That we, we covered the camps.
It's safer to stay away from that. Cover the camps with...
Because I thought it was more we were going to like, make sure they were covered, and then look into if there was staffing enough to do it.
And if I remember correctly, who we hired for, um, lifeguards, is who we got for applicants.
Right.
Is that correct?
Right, yeah.
We didn't have more applicants. We didn't turn anyone away.
Well, Olive was going to get her lifeguard certification last year, but she, we didn't have the budget to hire her, right? That was my, that's what I was told last year.
No, because she worked with camp.
Yeah.
She did that.
She worked camp.
And we had a lifeguard with camp, so...
Well, I know, but had there been more money for like weekends or whatever, I was, that's what I was told last year, was that...
It might be, and I didn't know that.
She was willing to do it, but there was no budget. So it was the first year where we actually had applicants, but then we didn't have the budget. So that's great. But it is what it is, though.
Yeah, well, it sounds like we have it budgeted for camp. And that can be something, the budget is right now what it is, and that's something we can definitely move this way. That's my, I'm sorry. My ring's loud.
Don't even need your dabble.
No, I have my ring.
Can I just make a suggestion, Lori?
Sure.
What do you think, um, so my son, Max, has gone to the camp with Lori for the past two summers, and it's absolutely fabulous, big supporter. Um, he, he cheated on you a little bit last summer and went to another camp for a week or two. I'm sorry. Also, like, camp wasn't those dates. Um, but they got these really great fluorescent green, like, swim shirts, like camp tee shirt, but they wore them when they went swimming, and I just thought that was such a fantastic idea
I think that's genius idea.
To support, because that's a lot of responsibility for a lifeguard, to have twenty-five kids in a lake.
Do you know how it...
But they were they, and I, they couldn't have, I would be happy to show you, because I still have it, um, if, you said there's maybe a little bit of wiggle room in the budget.
I'll look into it. I'll look into the pricing. I like that.
It was just like a short sleeve, little fluorescent, and it did have the, uh, camp logo on it. I don't know that you would have to do that, you know?
That's what's so happened.
I know.
Okay, well...
This is Lori.
Well, I don't know, I'm still good.
I know.
Yeah, that's really a great idea. I used to, went hiking, make my kids wear fluorescent armbands. Really, it was a bandana tied around one arm.
But I just thought that was such a brilliant idea.
And it is hard, because I sit back so many times trying to count heads, and really, when they're all bobbing out of the water, they all look the same, so I don't know if I'm getting our kids and everybody's kids, and, yeah, I like that idea.
It's good visibility if you do go...
What's that?
Are we good with Lori for five weeks? Um, before we totally decide, um, so we budgeted ten thousand for summer rec salaries, and it looks like for, um, for Elfin Lake, that ninety-seven fifty, is that separate than the ten? Was that part of the ten?
That's the concessions.
That's concessions.
Right.
Okay, and so we've hired two people so far?
Yeah, two returning.
Two are, two are returning, and what's the rate for them for a lease?
Their minimum wage.
Their minimum, so what is that, twelve or something?
Yeah, it's, I'll have to double check. It went up, it's gone up every January.
Yeah.
What's your in California? I'm up to twenty today.
Thirteen sixty-seven.
So thirteen sixty-seven. Okay, and then we would have, we'd like to, if we could, to hire two more.
Oh, yeah, we need four.
Correct?
Yeah.
So that ninety-seven fifty is basically taken up with the concessions salaries, right? So out of the ten thousand, it looks like we have eighty-nine for camps.
And then a little more for Ari, if we need a...
Right, so unfortunately, it looks like for this year, we don't have enough money to pay for a lifeguard pass camp. From what I'm seeing for a figure, we've got ten thousand budgeted, we're using basically most of it for the summer camp, so I think because the other salary we have, the other amount we have, will cover just concession only. And I think that's the way it is.
And I think if you, if we budget for that now, then we won't have mu, uh, money for those times, or maybe it goes over for hours, or for, or using Ari, or using somebody else.
Yeah, yep, so I, unfortunately, that's where we are for this year. Okay, if there isn't anything further, I think we can move on to our next...
Because of five weeks, right?
Oh, yes, thank you for that.
Okay.
So consensus?
Yep.
Five weeks?
Five weeks.
Five weeks?
And I do wanna run by, like, I'm trying to do more for the town, too, you know, and so if anybody's opposed for some reason, I'd like to, you know, hear what you have to say, and know why, and...
Well, so, so what hours are you working, Lauren?
Oh, I have seven forty-five to two fifteen, but I'm thinking I'm probably gonna stay at least another hour.
So there's nobody over eighteen after you leave?
Correct.
I don't think we can do that.
Sorry, I just, just dawned on me the time there, because now there's not two of you.
You know, but we talked, Lisa and I talked about it last year.
There's always one of you there, right, though?
Yeah.
Oh, because I did ten hours.
Yeah, yes.
Sorry, I just, it just clicked that Olive is...
That's okay, that's okay.
Yeah.
And actually, I'm sorry to backtrack, but we're talking about a time change, too.
Yes.
You guys are good with that? Um, I don't, I looked through all, most of Rutland's camps are eight to four.
Yeah, right.
So maybe if we do eight to four, I'll just plan on being there, start to finish.
Okay.
And I still think it'll lay in the budget.
Yeah, I think it will.
With no problem.
Because I, I know other places require an over eighteen-year-old to be insurance children, especially...
Right, although, I must say, with Max, I feel a little more comfortable, I get that, but legally.
Yeah, yeah, I wonder, yeah, in terms of insurance.
I think it is legal.
And that you have somebody eighteen present at all times.
Exactly, yes.
Okay, thank you for letting me know, Dawn.
Yeah, because with Tapestry at Rutland, even though there's younger people who work within the director...
You have to be over eighteen, if you're under eighteen, you're only considered an assistant.
Okay.
And the same thing is for Rutland rec. There has to be...
I'll redo the budget and send it to you, and then we'll go from there.
So just do eight, eight to four, then.
Yeah.
I was thinking Olive was older, and it just clicked with me that she's not.
So, are we still good with camp for five weeks?
Yeah, as long as we redo the month of, yeah, that works.
Your money coming in kind of, yeah, pays.
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
I like it. Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay.
You guys have a handle to turn that water on and off as you need it down here?
Um...
Is that something you should get hold of?
We have, I mean, um, Lowson has one.
Yeah, but...
Right.
We don't have one.
Well, that's what I'm asking is, wouldn't it make sense that you guys have one, then you could, for now, until you get the faucet put in, you could turn the water on and off as needed, instead of calling Bill to have Bill come down every time to do it?
Yeah, so the thing is that, when you turn it on now, the way that it's broken is that it just runs, it doesn't turn off at all.
Oh.
So we can't really turn it on.
Oh, no, it's broken?
Yeah, so we can't turn it on.
Oh, okay, okay, all right.
That's how it's broken.
That's how it's broken.
It is broke.
It is, it's broken on the end, it's not leaking underneath. It is broken. Indeed, it is broken. It's just not broken in the way we thought it was broken.
All right, um, all right, I would just...
Yeah, I mean, if we need to like, you know, fill something, we could turn it on and turn it off.
Right.
I wouldn't wanna like, get into like, wasting water, you know, until we have a way to like, have it on.
Right.
I'm just thinking it'd be nice to have one down there anyways.
Yeah, we should probably get one into the shed, but we'll have to talk to the water district about like, because, you know, I know people have met with them about asking them to donate the water, so that we don't have to pay for it, because it's another thing we have to figure out.
Yeah.
So I'll look into all of that, figure out how they're gonna, I don't know, how we're gonna put a meter on that for like, when we use it on occasion, and...
I don't know where you'd put a meter.
I know, so that's the other thing.
Not if it doesn't show up in, especially if it doesn't show up in that building.
Right, and where, and you don't know what it is.
I would solve a lot of problems.
Yeah. Well, that may be something to look at for next year.
Yeah.
Is to actually break it out, find it, break it outside, put it into the building.
Yeah.
Well, it's just like built into the wall, and nobody knows it's there, just like, nobody knew where it was in the ground.
Probably she rocked over it or something, it goes up over the ceiling.
That would be funny. I mean, yeah, well, we'll be back once we figure out the details, but we just wanted like some, you know, initial approval, and we'll come back with more details once we know how much it's gonna cost, and how we're gonna turn it off, and all that stuff.
Cool.
All right?
Excellent.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Thanks, Amy.
Good night.
Thank you. Okay.
Andy, what's your score?
I don't know, but we're, we're moving ahead, and we're staying on time. Um, local emergency operational plan and NIMs adoption. We have a copy of this?
Yep, it's in your pocket.
It's in our packet.
It's the same thing every year. The only thing I'll need to do is, um, add Kathy's chair.
Okay. Okay, so we adopt these annually?
Yeah, we need a motion for these two.
So we will need a motion.
I'll make a motion, please. Adopt the local emergency operation plan and NIMs adoption.
Second.
You get this one.
Okay.
Rob.
Okay.
Gotta get in here somewhere.
That's right.
Wait for it.
We do this every year.
I'm in favor of that, too. I have to go.
Yeah.
For sake.
Was that a motion, Justin?
Oh, sorry, are we, I'm, I lost my...
I think they have a motion, right?
We have a motion for the public works?
We have a motion yet to adopt the plan.
The, the emergency plan?
Yes.
Yes, I thought we had a motion, I thought we had a...
We do. Did we do all in the favor yet?
We haven't, so all in favor?
All in favor.
And Laura said yes. He said yes.
A bold one.
So, yes. All right, now we do public.
We, we're all set.
Public Works is also one of those ones.
Oh, okay, so Public Works is mutual aid.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Nope, all those in favor?
Aye.
I'll, I'll ask Rob, and then I'll send you when he gets back.
Okay, so now we are up to DRB, board alternates. Um, so my thoughts on this, okay, is that since, um, the DRB has its own policies and procedures, um, that if they would like to, they think the wording for DRB alternates needs to be revisited, that they revisit that, and then we see their final, what they've come up with, and come to a decision when we see what they have come up with. Since they're the ones who are affected by this and understand how it works, um, maybe they draft the language.
I, I guess the weird thing is if we're, we're on the procedural rules of order that we just voted to do, why do we have to have separate for other groups? Because they're making, they're making a whole like, modified thing here that...
This is something they did in two thousand and seven, adopted their own rules of procedure before we even did rules of procedures for the select board, so they've had their own, and they do have a lot of little different things than like rec or conservation and us, so they do, they updated it last fall and re-adopted it in October, and then the issues with alternates came.
Because like the, like on meetings, A, like only twenty-four hour notice, we need forty-eight hour notice for anything we do, for a special meeting.
I mean, they still have to go by the open meeting law, so they still have to give forty-eight hours.
Twenty-four is special.
Is, is twenty-four for special, okay.
Yeah, for special meetings, it's twenty-four, but they still have to go by open meeting law.
Yes.
And isn't like, for, for, it just, it's confusing to me, because we have these two different versions of this, and then F, like the idea, the additions or deletions is the first thing you do in any meeting, so why do they have to have their own thing saying that Cher can do it? Just weird, just, just weird to me that...
No, I hear what you're saying. So what, what do other people think?
And it doesn't, well, it also doesn't address what Joyce brought up, was the idea of, what does that alternate do, right? Because that was the big, that was the big start of this, is, yeah.
Those are...
I think that's what they need to discuss.
Yeah.
Is, is coming up with a clearer definition of what the alternate's purpose is.
So they seem to have come with a complaint about it to us.
Right.
So maybe we need to give a suggestion to them to redo their things and potentially eliminate having that alternate.
Right.
That is the select board's suggestion to modify yours to do this.
Because it puts the people at the, at the table that have to deal with this to kind of hash it out.
Exactly, and they can either go ahead and firm up what an alternate is, or decide to take it out.
Right.
But I think because it's part of what they do, they come up with...
They need to do it.
They need to do it.
They can listen.
It sounds like we're in agreement. Um, other than, I think Justin's kind of saying, um, having the DRB maybe either, do you wanna...
I, I just, I just think, Lori, I just think the, if they're going to... I just, I, why, what is the purpose of having separate rules for this when every other organization in town is, is doing it? I mean, if they feel that they need alters because they frequently, people aren't able to make the meetings, because they're not regular completely, because it's not always, I could see that, but the other stuff, why?
But if this is what they had before, the town had, the select board had its own, maybe they need to consider, whoa, this is times we could not have our own.
Yep, they could decide to do that.
Maybe a recommendation to them is to...
Follow.
Is to, right, to upgrade it, follow the, the select board's...
Rules of procedure.
Rules of procedure, or the town's rules of procedure.
Mm-hmm.
Because they, at this time, they don't follow the open meeting law anyways, so they've gotta upgrade that, update that.
And it would just be easier if there's one set.
Yeah.
And then as things change...
Like, if that's our recommendation?
Higher above us, we make our adjustments, which then they have.
Our recommendation to them is to follow the towns' rules of procedure.
Right, but also, just like looking at, again, like looking at C underneath the alternate members thing, is, it's also, that weird thing, if an alternate member is, is picked, then you have to continue on that, so, but does that mean then the normal person doesn't come to those DRB meetings, even if it's a different thing? So like, you're, you're adding all these different votes back and forth, it just makes it harder, harder to...
It makes it confusing.
Yeah.
Makes it very confusing.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, like, yes, their rules of procedures discuss the alternate, if an alternate is, that they have to stay all the way through to the end of the decision, even if it's multiple meetings.
Right.
I just feel like our rule, the select board's rules of procedures don't cover some of the things that they do.
Oh.
They just don't, they don't even, we don't even discuss alternates in our rules of procedure.
For sure, no, no, like, if that's something that they feel that they need to have, then that's, that's something viable to have, but like, the meeting section is just...
Maybe what they do is look at ours, incorporate our rules into theirs, and then, because ...
Yeah.
The use of the alternate, but then, but then the other piece was, when the alternate decides not...
That's the problem. That's the problem, is having the alternate seems to be causing their issues.
Well...
Because it's not defined and clear, and not always capable to be done.
And, and I think, but it also, also sounds like in this, is that when somebody is an alternate, they are called to be, to come to that meeting, so that theoretically means that they should not be at other meetings, or they're not expected to be at other meetings, they're not a part of the board.
Well, if they are voting.
Right, they should not be, they definitely should not be voting unless they've been called directly to it.
Or participating in the call.
But definitely not participating. Participating, that's the other key, or participating, you're not participating, unless you have that statutory requirement.
Unless the quorum is not there, then they, the alternate steps in.
And that's what's been happening.
But that, but that, even then, it should be, it should be decided before the meeting happens.
Right, but there, the part about keeping them on through the decision process for, you know, multiple meetings for one, for discussion on one subject...
Right.
Is a good idea. Now pull them out of the meeting, set your normal person back in there, who wasn't there at the last meeting, doesn't know what was discussed, so...
But then, it is, but it is that weird thing, then also, that you could have a meet, a DRB meeting that has one slew, like slate of board members, and then another, another, in that same meeting, another slate of board members, they just get funky.
So it sounds like from what they have to do and how they have to do it, their, their procedures will differ from ours.
Yeah.
But it's more of an addendum than, than their own.
Exactly, so maybe, maybe what we say to them is, um, look at places that where you can merge with ours, and then where it needs to be different, clearly define how that is procedures going to work. Do we sound good? Does that sound good to everybody?
Yeah.
That sounds good.
Okay.
Okay.
Then that's our recommendation.
Got it.
Okay, moving on. Second-class liquor and tobacco licenses, Family Dollar. Okay, we have, um, applications from Family Dollar.
That's it, just them.
Just them.
Tobacco and second-class liquor license.
A second-class license allows us to sell beer and wine only to the public for consumption off the premises and to premises, and to export malt or business beverages only. And the question is, do we approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Select board comments and concerns. Does anyone have anything?
I have one.
Yes?
I, I, as preword, went to the Conservation Commission to talk about what needs to happen for grants, they were from the state, and talked about the law. They want us to have, they changed it in 2020, they want us to have a shade tree preservation commission. And I asked for, for volunteers, and I got some, some, but, but that would be to do a inventory of existing trees in, in our right of ways and public ways, and, uh, inventory of sites for future trees, and basically oversee that stuff, uh, so I don't have to do it all myself, you know? You know, if they're interested in grants, we're going to be, they're going to be receptive if we do the inventory and have a plan. That's, that's, uh, a plan would be the inventory including the, uh, including, uh, sites for future trees, and then just say that you're going to plant them and take care of them. And that, that's, that would be the plan. The other thing we would have to do, though, is also make an ordinance, because the, the old one's obsolete because the law changed, you know? We used to be able to, uh, have jurisdiction over any vegetation in the right of way. And now we, we have jurisdiction, once we put it on a, on the list, once we have it in the inventory, then we can.
So it has to be in the inventory now?
Yeah.
So you're saying that we need to make an ordinance?
So, uh.
Are you saying that we need to make an ordinance?
Make an ordinance?
Are you saying that we need to make a new ordinance?
Yes, new ordinance to enforce, uh, our plan, you know, to support the plan.
To support the plan for, and this would be, um, off of the Conservation Committee?
No, this is, this has got to be a separate.
So it's a separate thing?
So it's a branded commission?
Yeah, and I got, I got three people, three or four people there, and another one I know of, uh, and I'm going to see if I can get, call some more people, and if, I like to get six or seven, but, uh.
Okay.
Yeah.
So for now, um, we won't do an ordinance tonight.
If, if I can get a, a list of people to propose to you, I will.
Right.
If I can't get it by, uh, I may put a, a blip in the, in the newspaper asking for volunteers, but, uh.
Okay.
There's good interest in it.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Thank you, Rob. Any other, um, comments, concerns?
Did anybody else get a chance to read the thing that Art sent today?
I didn't even see what it says.
Some of it, I just skimmed it, I was just.
Yeah, same here.
Okay, it didn't, it didn't look like it, it was just the, it was the ethics bill that's coming in.
Didn't look like anything.
Uh, yeah, I didn't, I didn't think, see anything that felt like it was going to be detrimental to us, except that, yeah.
I have not had a chance to see it yet.
I was just curious of whether I missed anything.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure.
Well, I was trying to like.
There was an insinuation in the email to say that, yeah.
It's like, it was going to be an issue.
It was going to be bad, yeah, but no, I didn't see anything. Did you, Sandy, did you get a chance to read the 53 pages?
I looked a little bit, and I did the same thing, I didn't recognize anything that stood out, I didn't.
Looked all normal, common.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, cool.
Okay, great, okay. Moving on to other business. Um, Rutland County Solid Waste would like to offer three rather than two waste days. Uh, the July date would require the facility to be open an hour later, and if we don't object, um, Sandy's going to ask Art if he'd be willing to work an extra hour.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, it is.
Um, Julie's reported that the town received a check of $32.44 as part of the opioid settlement.
No.
Well, they could afford it.
Uh, the town received a total of $341.78 for fiscal year '23, and $91.33 for date fiscal year '24. We have the fiscal year '24 financials. And let's see.
The waivers are something that, it, it might come up down the line, it might not, so.
Okay.
Just FYI.
So that on the waivers is an FYI, we have another from, let's see.
I thought that would come up tonight, but.
The debris, yeah.
Oh, the waivers.
Yeah, the debris is FYI, too, they're working on that, which is a nightmare.
Okay. And now it looks like the town may actually get a first payment from FEMA.
Ooh. Soon.
Yes, um, for the loss of road salt.
Yep.
Okay.
Somebody going to say the magic of dern words? Now that it's halftime, it is 45, 45.
So, um, anyone up for making a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Yes.
I'll second that.
All right.
And we are adjourned.